Good evening. Folks. As this is the first. Board meeting after. The, the March eleventh. Election. As superintendent, I'm calling the Mount Vernon School Board meeting to order on Tuesday, March twenty fifth at five thirty P M. That just mentioned is this the first, the board's first meeting, superintendent opens the meeting and elects the board chair. Once the board chair is elected, the gavel, if you will, is turned over to the chair to facilitate the remaining board positions. I'm going to begin this meeting. By asking for nominations for the chair of the Mount Vernon School Board for the twenty five, twenty six school year. Do I have any nominations?
I. I nominate Peter Eckoff. I work for chair. I second.
And you're second. Pete, are you willing to accept the?
Yes.
The nomination?
Yes.
Do we have any other nominations for? Mount Vernon School Board Board Chair? Alright. So. There's not another nomination, I'd like to. Call a vote. All in favor? Peter Eckoff being the chair for the twenty five, twenty six. Alright, perfect. There we are. Pete, with that said, turn this meeting over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Bear, Mr. Barry. Thank you, fellow board members, for that vote of confidence. Next up, we're gonna jump into. Personnel, and we're gonna take care of something that we omitted in doing in our last official meeting. Jess, we appreciate you coming in tonight on your way to work. We just didn't coordinate the last meeting very well, and that's on me, but. As chair and, and our other people here around the table can chime in as well, you've been a tremendous asset to the board, the community, the school, you've had kids go through. Your passion shows every time you're either on the board or in a public meeting of some sort. And we can't thank you enough. We wish you well as the new director of, of recreation for the town of Vernon. And come back and see us. Thank you very much. We have a small gift of thank you to you in a card.
Thank you all very much.
Appreciate it.
Of course, it was my pleasure.
To Easter egg hunts.
Yes. Easter egg hunts in spring.
I just did it today. So again, thanks, Jess, very much.
My pleasure.
First off, public input, one of two for tonight. I will read the public input and procedure, public comment procedure. We will take public comment tonight from our virtual audience. If you wish to speak during the public comment sessions, we will allow in-person guests to speak for three minutes first. Once we go through all the in-person guests, we will open up for virtual speakers on Zoom. In order to speak, please do the following: one, raise your virtual hand; two, enter your full name in your avatar profile; three, when speaking, turn your camera on and say your full name and town of residence; four, when these are complete, you will have three minutes to speak. And Mr. Chamberlain, since we don't have anybody besides Jess in our public in-person, do we have anybody on Zoom?
We do not, sir.
Okay, thank you. Next up is our consent agenda. You guys want to reconsider your? So board organization. Quick summary, the board is to organize, including election of chair. We do need to take nominations for the following positions: vice chair, secretary, and appointment of all committee responsibilities. We'll just wait and, and go through the. List of appointees. I think last year, if we weren't rock solid on getting somebody, we kind of paused and just, we circled back on some of these, we didn't.
Perfect.
We didn't do everybody, I, I don't believe.
And we don't have to, if we don't completely organize, people gotta check their schedules and anything like that, we can come back in April and fill in, so. But I think, you know, we start off with nominations for the vice chair.
So at this point, I will entertain any nomination for the vice chair. Of the school.
Nominate Andrew Stokinger, vice chair, anyone?
I'll nominate Leaf. Amber.
I'll second. What are you here?
Reception to. Is there any other nomination for vice chair? Seeing none, we'll take a vote for Leaf Amber to be nominated and placed as vice chair of the Mount Vernon School Board. All those in favor? Passes four to none with an abstention from.
Five, nothing. Sure, that's concerning.
Thanks, Leaf. You'll do great. The next position we need to nominate and vote in is for secretary. And give me some texture on that as far as responsibilities, and says more, just when we go into non-public. Pretty much.
Yes, yes, and like for, like this evening, Danae's not here, commitment. Well, we have the video, I am recording, so she takes minutes off of that. This would be if we go into non-public, and we need someone to take minutes in archiving the work, that's not a non.
Okay, so for the position of secretary, I'll take nominations. I'll nominate Andrew Stokinger. Are you willing to accept that nomination? Any other nominations for secretary? All those, all those in favor of Andrew Stokinger is our secretary? The motive's in four, nothing, abstention by Mr. Stokinger, thank you, Andrew. And now we will start. On the committees, and at any point, I'm gonna have Steve and Michael add any texture they feel is needed. The manifest takes two people. I believe that the consensus amongst us is to have the chair be one, and then somebody else.
So, well, you know, Amy's not here this evening, she's, she's out of town. Well. Deserved, earned the time away after a long budget season for herself, but what she's asked us to do is, we can appoint. Point. People, but if you are currently the manifest signer, she would like you to remain the signer until the training. In May eighth, and so, and then after that, the new people will take over. Pete and Mount Vernon, we typically, you know, have the chair as one of them, but Amy's often. Reminded us that a new, it's, you're new, Colin, it's a good job for a new person to have, because you learn the budget and you learn how to, where the money goes and where the lines are. Leaf, I'm not sure if you had the opportunity to do that or not in, in previous, you know, part, but it's, it's both in there, that's the manifest.
So I personally am comfortable with not doing it or doing it either way. If Andrew wants to keep it, he's done a great job, he's been right on, you know, the day that they drop, he's been right there approving them. And I also agree with Michael's comments about the fact that it is a good learning tool. You don't have to study it, just scroll through it, but every now and then, things will pop up. I've sent a quick note to Amy many times and just said, hey, what's this for? But to Michael's point, it does educate you on where the money's going, so. I'm, I'm open to feedback from the rest of the board, whether you need to have me. Or if Andrew, you want to continue and, and Colin be nominated, I'm good with that too, so I'll let you guys speak. We'll go from there, but we do need two people. I will stay on until the training session.
If you get an email, you have to log in and read over what the financial checks for, and you're one of the assignments. But it has to be two of us.
Yeah.
I'm hoping to.
And you still willing?
Yeah, sure.
Alright, so I, I will nominate Andrew Stokinger as the first manifest signee, and I will nominate Colin Rogers as the second. Nominee for the manifest. Any other nominees that we want to entertain?
Sometime we have the board, all, all the rest of the board in reserve as a sub, just in case Andrew's out of town or Colin's out of town, that anybody in the board can come in and jump in. Okay, so if you want to also have an action item saying that the remaining board members will serve as alternates.
I, I can just be alternate, do we have to vote on that?
It's nice to have, yeah, we, we want to give some of the authority design.
Okay, so I'll amend that nomination to include myself as, as the alternate in case of. Somebody not being able to perjust it inside.
Correct.
Alright.
Do we have a second?
Second by Mr. Amber. All those in favor of the three nominations for the manifest? Passes five, nothing, thank you. Next up is the school district budget committee. And I believe that's Mr. Stokinger was the chair.
That was, I, I was our representative to the town.
The town.
For the school, is that the same, is that, that's, this role is?
No, that, yeah, this role is. The S A U Budget Committee. It's typically one person.
There's two things listed.
School district.
Oh, yeah, there's school district. Budget.
And S A U budget.
This year, the, the school district budget committee formed so late. That they really didn't have, they, they came to board meetings, it really wasn't the meetings or the board, but if they formed earlier, then you would, the board, a board member would attend their meetings as well. So it's, it's the Mount Vernon Budget. And one board member joined the three.
You want to stay with that?
No, they were around, I didn't do that one.
You did the town.
I was the town, but it was on.
We didn't have one for the Mount Vernon, because they, as Steve mentioned, they formed so late. Let's, let's just. Table that one down, okay, no problem, perfect. And then we have the S A U Budget Committee, this is the Mount Vernon representative to the S A U Budget Committee, that meets first typically. It, you know, if you go into board notes, Amy and Chelsea did a nice job of trying to describe like, kind of like the, the lift. Right, and it meets in the evening, there's Zoom's options, it's September through November. I think they end up having. Three. Three meetings. About an hour in length. So. We're looking for one nominee for that.
If you want. Yeah, I guess, I mean, I nominate the amber. For S A U Budget Committee.
I'll second that. Any other nominees for the S A U Budget Committee? Seeing none, I'll take a vote to appoint Leaf Amber as our Budget Committee Representative for the S A U Budget. Thank you, Leaf. Next up is our Policy Committee. Gonna miss, Miss Pinkley, who did a fantastic job. Leaf has also been on this year, I think he's done a, a great job for the Policy Committee, all the reports back that I've seen and comments, so. I'll open it to Leaf, if you're interested in continuing on as. Our representative on the Policy Committee.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think in general, yeah, it's kind of hard for me to. Make it to the meeting.
Yeah, this, this one's probably, as you know, just probably the heaviest lift of a committee, it is. And what we did is, if people need time to kind of think about this, and not commit this evening, but it does. Meet every other week. Typically, we try to start between eight thirty and nine and go to about ten, ten thirty, depending. There are Zoom options, but there is some stuff around, and quorums, whether can the look-ins doing that a little bit differently potentially? So we don't have to have an answer on that committee just yet, we have some time, but it is typically, then in the mornings. During the weekday, which makes it a little bit more difficult, and, and we get that, and so. If you're not in position to, we can come back to it, if you need, for sure.
I, I can do it, since I, you know, got the time, I don't believe it's my. My strength or my wheelhouse, but if we need somebody eventually, I mean, we can circle back for nominations, but I, I understand the workmen, so. That all you guys have, and it just really, it's a clunky time.
Yeah, that's, that's, you know, when you get paid, so, can't, can't make that time.
Yeah, understandable, and. Okay. We'll do, we'll put Pete in as a tentative, and then we'll come back to it and see what we figure out.
I, next, next up is Brick School Maintenance and Improvement Committee. I've been on this one in the past, it's, it's not very much heavy lifting. Just a couple of meetings a year, I think.
Alright, so this is. This is like two or three times a year.
Yeah.
And it's a Zoom option during, it's typically during like lunch. You know, time. Not a heavy lift, Pete.
No.
So we just need one.
Something you can call, okay, I'll nominate Colin Rogers to be our Brick School Maintenance and Improvement Committee Liaison.
I will second.
Any other nominations? All those in favor, Colin being a rep for the Brick School? Passes five, nothing, thanks, thanks, Colin. Next up is our P T A Liaison, we need one person, Jess, you, have you done this in the past?
I have, their meetings are monthly. It's not really a heavy lift, there's no prep for it, and I went to very few meetings, so.
I think it's a point of contact.
Yeah.
At that time, just drive it.
You can nominate me if you want.
I mean, it helps to have somebody who has a kid in the school, so.
Okay.
I'll, I will nominate Colin Rogers for that as the P T A Liaison.
I will second.
Any other nominations? Seeing none, take a vote for Colin to be our P T A Liaison. Colin passes five, nothing, thank you, sir.
So Pete, you know, seeing where this is kind of trending, we'll recommend you don't have to have a new after-school board association liaison. Okay, because we'll give you all the information that you need, some boards like it, can even attend a, a kind of annual meeting. The only people that have done that in my time have been Amherst. You know.
Yeah, I went a few years ago.
Yeah, it's not a. It's not something that we absolutely need, so, and I see, you know, people, they work, and I get that, you know, so it's part of making it work. Correct department, waiting his own degree.
Were you there? Oh, I don't think we had it last year.
I don't remember that, honestly.
Do you need the liaison?
I mean, I know most of your numbers, so.
Oh, okay.
I think you're okay.
The next one, I would say, is key and important. Town of Mount Vernon. Select Board Liaison. And you were that, right, Mr. Stokinger?
Well, I went to the Budget Committee meetings. So it's not exactly the same thing, so I don't know, is this a new one, it's listed?
I think we've had it.
It's kind of new, because the C I, they're doing C I P work now in the town, so it's, it's both C I P, capital improvement.
Oh, sure, so I was actually on their Capital Improvement Committee a couple of years back as well. So.
And I don't think you need to go every Monday night, but, you know, I don't know. It's a liaison, so it's like as needed.
Sure, sure, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have a problem with that, I probably know most of them.
Okay.
I will nominate Andrew Stokinger to be our Town of Mount Vernon's Board of Selectment Liaison. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Torres, all those in favor? I have nothing, thank you, Andrew. And.
I'll deal with the Budget Committee too.
That's it, right?
Alright, thank you.
Next item on our agenda for this evening is the Consent Agenda. Includes the draft minutes from our February fifth meeting. And there's a budget transfer request, and also. Proposed twenty twenty five, twenty six school year calendar draft. I'll take any questions or comments, but I would like Mr. Barry to just overview, or Mr. Chamberlain, whoever, the overview, the planning on the school calendar before we accept it.
Yeah, so, you know, we, we negotiated with M B E A, and. You know, Steve's done a good bit of the work, is aligning calendars, we tried to align calendars with, with Milford a little bit, and as we have, we. Have kids who do Boys and Girls Club and Y M C A, and we want to align some early releases, so Steve, do you want to talk to a little bit where we landed on this?
Yeah, this is, it's unusual, it's really nice, and so we had a great collaboration during the negotiations process with the M B E A. And appreciate the community support, so we added two instructional days, those are now included. And we reduced the number of early release days from seven to four. I think so overall, we're looking at, you know, almost what nineteen, twenty hours of increased instructional time through then, so. Because the contract passed, this contract, and this calendar is all set and aligned with the C B A. The early releases align with the Amherst School District. There is one nuance is. The voting day will be a non-school day and a non-P D day, that will just be an empty day. Because we really think it's important now not to have voting, and not to have school during voting. And just because the way the calendar and the negotiations went, there's other districts will have a professional development, but Mount Vernon has their professional development day at the end of the year. It's just a little bit different, so, but there won't, so there's, so March eleventh, there's not March eleventh next year, but whatever the voting day is, it's a zero, zero, no, no school, no P D. But besides that, the counters align.
Budget transfer request.
That.
For benefits.
Benefits.
Okay.
Are the P D days noted?
Oh, for your pay.
Yes.
So it's August twenty five, twenty six.
Yeah. Twenty eight.
Twenty eight, and at the end of the school year.
You got it.
So there's nothing in between.
And the reason for the P D is, we have. Literacy pilot that we talked about quite often, it's cash here, and it's going into effect, and we want to front load the days, and I'm sure we're prepared to, to run, running with that, and we got some. Safety and security stuff we're gonna end up.
In math too.
Math in sixth grade, so we need the front end.
So this calendar, we get back to early Labor Day again?
Yeah, it jumps back. It's, I think it's one of the last times, the first day of school will be after Labor Day. But it's almost right now, we're getting that.
Any other questions or comments? Again, this is just the draft.
No.
This is a draft now, and we're looking to adopt it. Once you adopt it, it will be a draft.
I'm gonna get this real quick.
Just a motion to accept.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to accept the agenda. I'll second.
All those in favor of voting for the Consent Agenda, which is the draft minutes, Budget Transfer Request, and the School Calendar, twenty five, twenty six. Passes five, nothing. Thank you, gentlemen, for the insight into the calendar. Next up, we have our reports. Any questions or comments for? Mr. Barry, Mr. Chamberlain on the Facilities Report, or Mr. Lighter?
So. Couple things with this. Steve, I'm gonna turn it over to Steve and just kind of give you guys a preview of what we're bringing, April's gonna be a big meeting. And so I just want to kind of set the table after we're organizing for what we're gonna do in April, and then Principal Report. As, as you guys know, typically, you know. Tom's here every other month, but with the organization, you know, he wanted to kind of sit here and be in the room with us, and. But typically, what we do, Colin, I kind of, when we have principal reports, we kind of hold our questions, get to kind of interact with it, and then Tom comes back for an update, any questions you have? And he kind of follows up on, on that, so in April, which is only April tenth, which is like, just fifteen days away roughly, we'll be back. We won't really go through the principal report, we'll take any questions, and Tom will update you on that, so there's that, and then. Treasury reports are pretty standard, and then with the Facilities Report, we got a little bit of, uh, some movement here, and I think we should. Kind of like talk a little bit through that, Stephen said the table for the April Board meeting.
Sure, just a reminder, in October, last summer, in the fall, and the board accepted the recognition of the Committee on the Educational Specifications. And we gave the educational specifications for the school to Herriman, and they developed some options, if you remember, they were presented to the community in October. It was, and there was. And a wide array of response to the, to the, to the projected value in the plan. And then we went right into budget season, and because of the teacher's contract and the budget, we kind of tabled the facilities, trying to get through and focus on the budget, the teacher's contract. But the board had asked, and so we'll be ready to in October, sorry, in April. To have an opportunity to, to communicate with the board and the community who comes, about really what would the educational experience be? For a seventh and eighth grader here at Mount Vernon? And, and contrasted with the seventh and eighth grade when they attend Amherst, so. Just to really try to, one of the feedback came from, is this what's best for kids? The seventh and eighth grade in Mount Vernon, or the seventh and eighth grade in Amherst, and so we thought the best way to do that. Was go pretty in-depth in the experience from the moment they get on the bus, and the moment they get home, the bus ride being Mount Vernon seventh and eighth grade, what, what options are for unified arts? What kind of morning program it would be, and what kind of intersclassical opportunities are for them, what kind of music opportunities are they here, and what are the implications of going? K eight, or P, or maybe someday P eight here, and then jumping right into South Union. So in April, we'll be ready to at least unpack some of that experience, so the board can, you know, just factor that into decision-making. One of the, one of the pieces, if, if, that does directly impact Mount Vernon, and I think was one of the instigating facts to why this whole journey started. Was the facility project in Amherst, if you didn't know, the, the facility project, the Wilkins Project did not pass. And how that impacted the Mount Vernon folks was the, if the fifth grade moved to the elementary school, the cost per student in the middle school in Amherst changes. Because the denominator is different, right, because instead of having four grades, you have three. And so the cost per student Amherst Middle School changes, and the tuition here is, is certainly directly linked to the cost per student in Amherst, no, are you with me?
Yeah.
So that's, so that has, didn't pass. That board will work on that, but that, if, if, if that had passed. That would certainly maybe change a sense of urgency here to look at other options, because of that denominator would have. Definitely changed in a few years, you with me, does that make sense? And I don't want to lose the fact that also in the package. Uh, just the board has, it was a, a, a room for the bubble, remember, we do have a, we do have a projected room and bu- bubble, that we really, we're gonna talk about that in April. Make sure everybody understands how many years out, and how long would we take to address the bubble. And also, Dr. Jennings, our Student Service Director, really believes, and Mike and I have talked about this a lot. That we really have to be honest and really thoughtful about whether or not preschool is an opportunity here at Mount Vernon Village School, because the preschool. Youngsters have needs, and we want to make sure we fulfill our requirements, our ethical right requirements in educating the preschools youngsters, so those are the three aspects of the project. And we'll talk about mostly seventh and eighth grade, that's really the biggest factor in this, but we'll talk about that in April. We also think it's a good time, Mike asked that it's a good time that we revisit the tuition agreement. Just to make sure the boards completely understand about where we are in the five-year, ten-year, because there's a five-year option. And we want to make sure the board has that timeline very early, so if there's any renegotiation, any work that you want to do, you have that opportunity, can't wake up. August, you know, October sixteen, so oops, so we're gonna review the tuition agreement. Just to make sure you understand the deadlines, and, and not having Wilkins pass, it's probably a five years out. Before that, if it does pass, is now gonna impact directly the tuition here, so there's some time to look at that contract, you with me? The other piece is. We costed up a facility, and we determined the educational specifications of the seventh and eighth grade here, but we haven't costed the educational specifications. How much would it cost to staff? With the four teachers, five, you have members, so five, six teachers, custodians, and all that stuff, so. If we can, Amy, Mike, I, Tom will get together and using average teacher salary, you know, we'll do the average teacher salary in Mount Vernon, the average pair of, you know what I mean, we'll take the averages, apply it. And it's all, it's, it's if, but it's a number that's based on some reference point. So we can start looking at what is not just the cost of facility. But the cost of seventh and eighth grade here, and also, what does it look like? And then the board will. Um and then the board will, and then I think we start. Educate the community a little bit more and getting out and saying, look, is this what the community wants? Because to be honest, we haven't had a lot of community engagement on this one. We've done some stuff. Everybody's busy, but like when we had the October night, we didn't have a lot of parents. Remember, we didn't have a lot of parents. We had a lot of. People were very concerned about the tax rate. No, no judgment, but remember, it wasn't huge. So we got some work to do. To see and it's not, I think the, and we'll take a look in April. Probably the biggest thing we have to deal with that's actual reality is the bubble. You know, like how long does it take to build? Do we want one classroom, two classrooms? Because we don't really want, I don't think Tom. Mike would recommend a class of thirty here. You know what I mean? Because we have fifty-eight kids. It's twenty-nine, twenty-nine. Um and so I, we don't wanna be caught behind the bubble. We wanna get ahead of the. Does that make sense? So we're gonna talk about these in depth in the April meeting. Might not have everything ready, but we'll be pretty close. There'll be substance stuff to talk about for sure. Does that sound all right? Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, and we, like I said, we wanted to. Kind of preview what April would look like. We're gonna give some possible viable solutions and options and things to think about. At the end of the day, it's the board's discretion on, you know, what what direction we go with, right? And 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 that's important. So we get that. Um so that's, that's pretty much the reports section for us.
So how much money do we still have out of the sixty thousand that was approved to? If we need to expend more money with Harriman or or somebody else?
Great question. I I asked the same question. I think it was still over thirty. Thousand left. I think the Harriman came in like in twenty-seven bid. And you remember, you saw the bid.
There was thirty-something.
We have twenty, maybe see, I flipped that the other way, so maybe.
I think twenty-four left, twenty-four left.
It was the thirty-six and change, but. So. One of the things that uh when Mike and I and Roger talked about it. Before we get too far down the line. Roger really believes in a construction management cost, not an architectural square footage cost. Right now Harriman has done maybe four, five hundred, six hundred dollars a square foot. It's just a multiplication problem. As opposed to the construction management, look, okay, to build this type of wall, this type of place, you know what I mean? It's a more specific number. Roger believes it's not a criticism of Harriman because they have to go high, but it's not, it's a number that is probably significantly higher than the construction manager cost. And there might be a time where if we're gonna get, move that forward, then we get a uh a construction man, someone that we stand behind and say, I could build you that for this. As opposed to this may cost this.
So one of the other concerns I had, uh I remember from October was decoupling. Our long-term um facilities plan. From the required long-term facilities work that. Would have to be built into any one of these projects for us to pass code. So if we're gonna communicate about this to the community, we have to say, hey, we we budgeted this out for the next ten years. We have to do X, Y, and Z from this plan anyways. To be able to touch. The shell of the building, we have to go pull it up to code. Um so we can communicate that we don't have to spend that cost. Out of our, our long-term uh. We have fun for that, right?
Yep, I just trust. Yeah, I I think that's a great point, uh Andrew, and that in the Harriman stuff was a boilers, right? It was. All the necessary work that would have been parsed out. So. So you are getting some costs done regardless of the project, because some of this stuff has to happen with a normal project. And I think you're, that's a good point.
I mean, and we could call out and take money out of that fund when we do that, because it is maintenance. Right?
Yeah, but that's part of the construction cost.
I mean, we, yes, right? But it's one of those things that we could bring up and then vote on, let it, you know, let everybody comment on, right?
We don't actually have to do it, right? So me and I've always said it, huh? I don't believe it's our decision. I think it's.
Right, yeah.
Their decision. This is, we're just, we're just the organizers of the information.
Hundred percent. I I appreciate that. This is a very close-knit community and significantly impacted. Um but our job, uh Mike, Tom, me, we're gonna be. Honest with the facts and the implications of this stuff. But what happens if you don't do a preschool? And what if we can't, I don't have room at uh Amherst. Then we have in preschool kids going to New Boston, going to Milford, going to Gostown. Right? That's the stuff we gotta work, because Amherst won't always, may not always have preschool. Unless you want to to to, you know, create in the tuition agreement preschool. Which you can do that.
Or we could do a reverse commitment.
Yeah.
But we'll have preschool available for him.
Yeah, or other communities as well. Yeah, one hundred percent. So, so your, your plan is to.
Touchdown on some of this stuff, you know. Based on your comments of a lot of stuff to go through. Is there a need and and this, I'll be insulted too. Is there a need for us to have? Another evening of presentation. About where we're at with all these elements you're talking about. And also selfishly, with you departing at the end of June. We are able to zap out all your knowledge of this project. One last time, you know, with Andrew, because he's been on it too, but. We can talk about staff and we can talk about all these elements we just kinda went through, and I I'm not sure that having it baked into. The board meeting is gonna let it breathe enough for our community members that have a lot of questions.
Yeah, so we thought a little bit about that, and I think as we get ready to to make a presentation in April to you guys, and if. If the feeling is that we need to have an additional meeting or a meeting with. Community, open to the community, we can sort through that. Um I think it depends on what you want to go from here to be communicated to the board as viable. Viable considerations. So I do think a first step is here. And then from here, figure out what next step was. And indeed, I'm with you as well, like, you know, there's potentially a lot of knowledge walking up the door here. You know, so.
Right, and and it would also give us the opportunity to invite Harriman to be there to answer questions. Roger. Tom, I mean, it would be your opportunity to come and answer questions. But again, we don't, let's not nail that shut. We'll just keep it as an open opportunity.
And I like that, do that.
Okay, the the last piece that was included. One thing that Mike and I have done is projected. What would uh a tuition vary estimate about if fifth grade does leave? The Amherst Middle School. And we can really talk about it. It's in in non-public, you know, it's like part of the tuition agreement kinda stuff. But I think it's important for the board to start at least feeling that number out a little bit. Because it really, it's a math problem, right? It's 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 new tuition amount versus facility plus educational cost. And then it's the educational piece, but the one thing is what's the cost over there potentially be? What's the cost over here? And then the education component. And I think having a non-public discussion about that now along with the tuition rate wouldn't be the worst to make up to. To make that a part of a non-public meeting, which is perfectly appropriate when you're doing tuition agreements and discussing parameters or any, that's a non-public.
You'll make it part of the April meeting?
Yeah, April non-public.
Thank you. Going back to our reports, you see, we do have the facilities report from um Roger, Treasury Report for January and February. And then I would, since Mr. Lecliter is here tonight, let him touchdown on his. His report um. As needed, any questions on the first three from facilities or the treasurers from the board? None, so having none, I will segue over to Mr. Lecliter to uh. Again, touchdown on what you have in your report.
Yeah, so I am going to, uh well, first of all, I'll just say in general, things are going very well. Um appreciate all the support, uh really positive vibe in our school, the the community all around. Staff is very happy. I think uh we're in a really important stretch of the year right now. I talked to the PTA about this last week. Is chunks of the year, you know, and the chunk of the year from uh after February break till April break. Is a really important chunk of instruction, um important chunk of uh assessment happens at the end of the year. But uh this part right now, a lot of uninterrupted instructional time. Uh seen a lot of good things happen in the classrooms. We've had a lot of good conversations as a result of our mid-year data review back in the winter. Um so you know, when I, when I report out and I give you the monthlies on the uh. On the goals and the priorities and where we are. Um I had a conversation with one of the things in our goals was about celebrating literacy and math. Um there's a lot happening on both of those fronts over the next few couple of months, but few weeks, uh we're gonna do our celebrate. Read across MV. You guys probably remember that. Some of you are new. Um. You're being voluntold to, no. Uh every year, we have, we have community folks come and read to kids. Uh as part of our Read Across MV, that's coming up in April. Uh we have our writing festival coming up in May. Uh we have a math night. We're bringing the carnival back. If you've been to the math carnival. Uh one of the most popular events that our school does. We do that every other year. It's a lot of work. Um that's gonna be happening. And uh just a lot of things as we get into the spring, a lot of celebrations, a lot of recognitions, a lot of uh um sort of. Presenting the work that's been happening. Uh so uh we're looking forward to that. And a lot of that was highlighted in the in the report, if you have any questions on that, but um. We've seen a lot of good learning, good, good instruction, and and like I say, really important stretch of the year.
Questions or comments?
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you. Can't wait for the the carnival.
Yeah, we're excited. It's gonna be, uh that'll probably end up being in May, so we're gonna have a couple of big events in May. Um oh, one thing I did wanna mention uh with Jess here tonight, uh we, I I was at the meeting for the for the spring gala. And uh there's a lot of good syncing up, I would say, between. Not just the school and and rec, but I would say just the community, um just some good planning and good, a good vibe there. So um it was exciting to be part of that, and um it's not just the parade. There's other things happening that. Not only with that, but some of the Easter stuff happening that uh we'll be putting out in our, in our newsletter over the next few weeks.
There was a few. At the evening meeting that we had, um and I believe you were there, but. What, and I know that um it's a good name, but we have a summer reading program at the Town Library, but. Is there an official summer reading program? That is implemented here for.
Yeah, for the children. Yeah, it syncs up with uh Down Library. Um and it was Patty, now it will be Carly, our our librarian.
Okay.
Um they will come in, we we actually visit the library before the summer. So our students go down there, our littles go down there, um but then they come up and they do some presentations. So we cover grades K to six. Uh but Gerais K to three, I believe, go down there and uh. There's two folds to this. There's the Downland side where they're doing a lot of, you know, things in the library during the summer kids can go to. We support that partner, plug that. And then we do a promotion, the two of us together down in the school. And kids are tracking their reading, and then we do a celebration in the in the fall. Not every kid. Not every kid meets the goal, you know, this per se. Um but you know, Joanne's very creative. Our library and Joy and get together and then um we we plug it. So. Um I don't know exactly what what I know there was talked about. I don't know all the.
It wasn't here.
I don't know what I know, and I don't know all the details of that program.
Yeah.
I can tell you that uh the program between us and Down is very well received. There's high participation. And uh yeah, we we do a lot in the spring to talk about it, plug it, put it in the newsletter, uh talk to kids and then um. Circle back in the fall. So.
I appreciate that.
Yeah. Yeah, we'd also just quickly, um part of our summer programming, we've also partnered with Down, uh where they. We've done some creative things with them. They they've, you know, as you know, they're very creative. So um some of the, some of the students that are here in the summer have also been. Part of that participation. So.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Next up is uh agenda item number six. Board correspondence.
Yeah, so this is a new addition that we reorganized. We thought it's wise in all three districts to put. Uh a standing agenda item called Board Correspondence. And you know, uh. Now that we're organized with the chair and the vice chair, there'll be a folder. That we link to this. And if the, if the Mount Vernon School Board receives an email. The rest to the board, the entire board, not individuals, we will house it in there. And if there's any themes or trends that need to be discussed or talked about or highlighted in public, uh you have that option. And each month when we get organized, we can, we can figure out what we wanna do with that. Um and. Uh we can, we're gonna fire up for that for April. And if you had a Mount Vernon s- uh school board email. Uh you might have received uh an email about the foundation. And so that would be something we would put in there and to discuss, but. Uh we're just kinda putting in there, explaining what it is as we prepare for the next agenda. We'll make that live. And we'll continue. Uh just know I've responded to that email and and let them know this process, and then we can get back in touch.
Thanks.
All right, so that's there. And that's that one.
Thank you, Mike. Next up, uh I have an agenda item number seven is policies. Uh these are read on February twenty, at the SAU board meeting, and I'll let our policy committee expert, Mister Amber. Bring us up to date on where we are and. Any, any highlights that we need to be aware of.
Yeah, so I think. This was the recent update, Title Nine.
Yes.
These are all state-driven?
Yeah, yeah, so.
Well, it's.
Federal driven. If you. You know, we, the the policy committee worked. And and so you saw they, we approved. The updated versions in the, in the early fall of twenty twenty-four, they make us current with federal changes. Then after the election in November, there are quickly some amendments to Title Nine. That asked us to go revert back to the twenty twenty version of twenty twenty. The committee did both. We uh worked with both the the state and the federal guidance and in in. And uh we developed these and then as people presented these at the SAU meeting in February. Uh that was the, that was the first read. And what we're hoping tonight is get a motion. Mount Vernon to to accept this, waive their first read and accept this, uh these updates and changes. Um so looking for a motion to adopt these policies as presented.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
I'll, I'll second it. All those in favor of accepting the uh policies as written? Ask for one abstention or one no?
Abstention.
Abstention for Mister Stokenger.
Um and just uh uh as we do policy work. Um Chelsea does a good job with that and and uh form that we link into the agenda. Describing the work and the changes in the far right-hand column. I know it's tiny to read, but if you open and blow it, you know, people get into it. And that's, that helps and then, you know, board notes. We don't get a chance to take a look at it as we do policy work. Always look at the board notes and simply. And we'll do the best update I've done updating. So I appreciate the work. It's a bear. The committee is, that's real work. So I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next up, uh agenda item number eight is personnel. I did see nothing in the content. Do we have anything to discuss?
We have, we do. We have, we're gonna do this in two phases today. Um the first phase is that we do have a resignation letter. That's attached in there. We have a special ed teacher. We hired this first year. Her name is Morgan Bailey. Uh she's attached a resignation letter explaining why she needs to uh resign. It is, it is a loss. Uh uh but we support Morgan in her future endeavors and future plans. And uh we make a motion to accept this resignation with regret. That's the first thing. The second thing is. Uh we're gonna go into non-public, and we're gonna discuss the twenty-five, twenty-six teacher nominations. We'll come out in non-public. And we'll, we'll vote for those.
Could I say something on that resignation?
Yeah, sure.
Um Morgan uh would not mind me sharing this. Uh Morgan was a fantastic hire. Uh she came from a local district. Um she can't say enough about her experience at MV. Uh did not come into this expecting to resign, just to be clear. Uh but she has some exciting family news, and uh as a result of that. Uh has family, her husband made a decision um that she's gonna be a stay-at-home mom for now. So uh. I told her I'll babysit the kid in the office. Uh happy for Morgan, happy for her family. It's an exciting time for her. Uh a little unexpected for her, actually. Um but uh very happy for her and uh and her husband, her family. So she'll be back.
So we have motion to accept, get with her with regret. I'll make a motion to accept. Second, second for Mister Porus. All those in favor? Second, second from Mr. Porus, all those in favor? Passes, I have nothing.
And we'll come back to personnel after.
Okay, next up, Mr. Barry with superintendent updates.
Non-public, I mean.
We'll go in non-public and then we'll come back at it.
Okay.
And superintendent update, pretty brief this evening, uh, keep in mind, we have the April meeting, where it's going to be a bit more of a full uh, full slate and agenda, uh, just a couple of things for me. Uh, a lot of work by the school board and and the community members leading up to the the March vote. I appreciate all the partnerships from from, uh, you know, Bonnie at the library and her staff, and then Tom and and Pete for for attending, and then some people who made attended on Saturday, listening session. Uh, I I just, a lot of good community efforts on this to educate and inform. Um, and so, uh, the one we did, the the library that Thursday, it was a little bit of a different twist. There was a little bit of the SAU budget, wasn't so much MV, we talked a lot about the MV budget during the year. Don't talk a lot about the SAU, I knew that in different pockets people wanted to, so we did that. And then we also talked about the framework and some of the data behind the framework and the reasoning. And I thought tho- those sections of the the meeting went well, and I appreciated the opportunity. It it was a decent showing, you know, I thought it was more, but it was kind of inflated with person, you know, board members and school personnel. But it was about ten, twelve people, but it was all said and done, and that that was great. Um, appreciate that. Our sec. Um, we just serve as educational, you know, uh, school is a, um, a, we have, as superintendent, I sit on that committee, and typically, uh, a member from SAU thirty-nine also serves on the board there, that board uh meets monthly, sometimes not every month, but monthly basically, and they flip from the morning or the afternoon. Uh, currently, i- it is a Mount Vernon board members opportunity or turn to serve, if 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 that's something that's not, you know, something anyone's interested in because of scheduling, or just plain out interest, we can, you know, move it to another board, um, and we'll try to find a a representative there. So just wanted to give you guys a preview that that's going to be talked about at the SAU meeting in April, at the end of April. Um, and then the last thing, as you were lining up, you know, some scheduling, April's a big meeting, Tom's going to be in April, Tom will be in May. And uh, and so any questions, you know, people have as we're starting this cycle, plenty of opportunity to engage with school personnel, so that's the superintendent update for today.
Thank you, Mike. Um, next up, uh, public input, two of two. Uh, we still uh do not have anybody live here in the library, in the chamber, and do we have anybody online?
No, sir.
Having done, we will now take a motion to go into non-public, um, to discuss uh staffing.
I will make a motion to go into non-public. Yeah, well. Um, what time is the the April meeting at? Or we have to, sorry.
Uh, but typically go five thirty.
So it's the one day of the the month that I have to work near Boston that, so I might not be back until six or six thirty.
Okay.
But I'll still come, but it's just, I'll be late.
All right.
Thank you. So, right? If it's going to, if it could be booked at six, it'd be great, better, but I know you won't need to go home after.
But you could, I mean, I'm just saying that if you, you could, you could zoom call in.
Right, right.
You know, listen.
But that that last twenty minutes of drive across Amherst doesn't have signal.
Yes. So let me put board time, and we can't get the board time right, maybe we front load it with some of the hopefully stuff. Yeah, you know. So we'll, we'll work on that, appreciate that, so.
All right, and then, yeah.
In the non-public, it's ninety-one A, colon, three, Roman two C.
All those in favor of going into non-public?
Yeah.
Passes.